I'm Rita Bonferme, it's my first time leading a meeting, it's only my fourth meeting. So we're gonna start out with the reorganization of our board. So we have motion for chairman.
I make a motion, Rita.
I make a motion, heck no.[33.11][33.11](laughter)
You got it, she's in.[36.61][36.61](laughter)
Well, I'm hoping for chair.[40.54][40.54](laughter)
Bonferme, chair.
And you're gonna be co-chairman. I make a motion for Penny.
Really?
Okay, wait, wait.
Wait, wait.
Back up a moment, so we...
No, she's already in, it's too late for her.
Penny made a motion for Rita.
Right.
Okay.
The man did not second it.
Who seconded it?
Well, nobody.
I second.
Okay, we got John seconding.
Bonferme, you got it, you're on top now.
I...
Aye, aye.
There's too much talking.
Yeah.
Too much. And we don't know if Mr. Winkler...
Can you hear me?
...is voting or not.
Are you voting?
We need to hear your votes.
Dennis.
They just nominated me to be chairman.
Hello?
Rita.
Rita.
Okay.
And, so they need to know your vote, yea or nay?
I was over yea.
Okay.
That was a yea.
Yea. Yeah, that was a yea.
Yea and nay is the same thing.
And I guess we say motion carried unanimously?
Yeah, motion carried. All right, now we got a motion for vice chairman, and Lori has brought up Penny.
Penny.
I second the motion.
Did you hear that, Dennis? Penny for chairman, it's Lori nominator, I'm sorry, vice chairman, Lori nominator. And Joe seconded it?
John.
John?
Sorry. I agree.
Motion carries.
Motion is carried. All right, motion for secretary and treasurer.
I make a motion, Lisa.
I second it.
Thank you.[152.31][152.31](laughter)
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Do the raises now, as well?
You gonna give her a raise, now you put her on?
Yes, now we're talking about salary. Do you have your...
It's synthetic, executive session.
I think Lisa has done an absolutely excellent job, up and down the board maybe six years now, and five secretaries.[185.31][185.31](laughter) And she's one of the top, okay? And I feel that she's underpaid. So what I propose for Lisa is that she would be raised to fifteen and a half dollars an hour, plus six percent. Now, I'll finish with the rest, as far as I'm concerned, it's up. Uh, the motion for Cory and Jim would be a six percent pay raise.
Let's just take care of my...
Yeah, hold on, hold on.
One hundred and twenty.
Dennis, hold on.
Hold on, hold on.
What is Lisa's current rate?
Lisa's current is at fourteen, fifteen, she got a fifty cent raise. Now, he wants her up to...
Let's go back to secretary treasurer, okay? I'd like to raise her to sixteen point three an hour.
And I suggest we go into executive session.
One executive session. A still pay raise, plus six percent. I'd like to watch you during now.
Penny has requested we do this on an executive...
Session.
Session. So we can discuss everything else and then come back to the raises afterwards.
Wait. Discuss everything else to pay this...
Finish, finish this packet.
First, we have to do that in executive session.
Wages can be done?
Yes, I can. Wage, you mean, but you're not, wage is all right, are you not all wages in executive session?
Yes.
You have to give the reason for going to an executive session. So it's the discussed wages and all your wages.
Wages, all wages.
Okay. So we can go into executive session now, or wait till after the regard of initiation of meeting?
I'd finish this paper.
That's what I'm saying. All right, so...
Excuse me, you're also gonna have to make a motion to amend your agenda. We've never had an executive session on this...
No, it's not.
Because I didn't know we were...
Do we, uh, do we really think it's necessary for an executive session to set these wages? Is that how it was done in the past, I knew?
Yeah.
Or that was done in the past?
We're all new with Penny.
An executive session?
Yes.
All right, I'll go with your thought.
Just so we can discuss them and throw it around before we...
So we're gonna finish voting on the reorganizational meeting and then do the raises.
Correct.
That's fine.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes, we're good.
Any, you guys all good?
I don't know if you can do that, because you're reorganizing now with this on the agenda.
And we're sticking with this paper, but we're labeling everybody and then coming back and dealing with the raises. We're not going to just wait.
Well, I understand that. All I'm saying is, under the reorganizational part of it, you might wanna set a standard wage now and then amend it in your regular meeting, go to an executive.
Well, we can basically stick with the raise now.
I think we... Because this is a reorganizational, this isn't a regular...
That is, that is correct.
We just stick with the wage now.
Keith is correct.
Wage now.
I don't know that we can set aside items...
I don't think you can.
The raises, I don't think you can either. So I make them, I would...
You can either, either say zero.
I would suggest that we just do it in the reorganizational meeting as now, unless somebody has a specific problem.
You can regulate anything too. I think what Keith's saying is, right now, just state what these wages are, as of 2001.
Yeah, 2001, yeah.
Okay.
So right now?
To be amended, or new ways fixed in the regular meeting.
That's right.
I think that's what Keith's saying.
Yep. And that way it doesn't deviate from your agenda.
That's right.
Thank you. All right, did you hear that, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Lisa right now is at fourteen fifty, correct, Lisa?
Yes.
And then, motion to reappoint the license operator, is still Holly, correct? We have no other choice?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to, you have to answer the motion for Lisa. You didn't make the motion, didn't second it.
Motion for Lisa, yeah, we did.
I think we did.
Yeah, we got Lisa done.
I think we did Penny and Rita.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just a standard, or standard wage.
Yeah.
Standard wage.
Okay.
Sorry.
And then, motion to reappoint Holly.
I'll make the motion.
As the license plant operator, okay?
I second.
And...
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And then the fifth one, is motion to appoint Cory, keep Cory as a sewage plant supervisor/ head of plant maintenance labor.
I'll make that motion.
At this point, he is at...
I second that motion.
Sorry. He's at sixteen dollars an hour.
About sixteen, probably.
No, it says sixteen.
Sixteen.
Do that from fifteen to sixteen.
He's only fifty cents more than Jim, so, actually, that's right. Actually.
Sixteen dollars an hour was his per week.
Yeah. And then, all in favor of keeping Cory, appointing him?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, the motion to appoint, we're gonna Jim, as the plant maintenance labor.
I'll make the motion.
All right, and his pay rate is at fifteen fifty at the present. All in favor?
Aye.
Was Penny the second on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, that's all right.
I started, Dennis?
Okay.
Okay. Motion to set the treasurer bond at a hundred thousand?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let Dennis second it.
Okay. Let me know if I'm moving too fast, Lisa.
Nope, you're good, as long as I know who's saying what.
All right. Then the motion to reappoint Nicholas Insurance, is our insurance carrier?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Dennis first, Lori second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, motion to reappoint Jeff Dubois as our solicitor.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to reappoint the EADS group as engineer?
I'll make the motion.[626.52][626.52](laughter)
I look at one more. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to use First Commonwealth Bank as our depository?
I'll make the motion.
Did you say all in favor?
She said all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to set the meeting date and time for the second Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM?
I'll make the motion.
Has it always been that time?
Yeah. Unless we have like an executive or something like today, we need to discuss something prior, then we have the six o'clock one.
Okay, who was the second on that? We had Penny as the first?
Yeah.
Don't question me.
Okay.
Who, 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 anybody seconding it?
Aye, I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to set the mileage at fifty eight point five cents per mile?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need to appoint a backup secretary.
You want Jamie?
Jamie?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
But I have one question on thirteen, is that fifty eight point five cents, is that the standard government mileage?
Yes.
Okay, I thought...
And I'm sorry, on fourteen, who made the motion for Jamie, was it Penny?
Penny.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, to executive session.
Okay.
I second it.
6:14 PM.
Aye. Now we can go into executive session?
Okay, so if you're breaking for executive session, then we'll shut the recording off and then...
Danny, you have to make the motion, you gotta open the meeting.
Oh.
And you're gonna make the motion for access to, to insert that into the meeting, you're not allowed to do it without...
We have to start the regular meeting.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
We have to start the regular meeting.
Do we shut everything down for work?
No, you actually gotta go, get rid of the meeting, and run down to your business.
Yeah, I know, but I'm questioning the executives. Nothing gets shut down, because someone has to take notes, something, it has to be...
No.
Okay.
It's just a board.
Okay, so we're gonna start...
Call the meeting, we're turning. Call the meeting to order, so I need this to be... Say pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance, start the flag.
Right. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Gotta go all the way to new business.
Gotcha.
All right, we're going all the way to new business now.
Roll call, Rita.
Yes, I am.
I should've said Rita Bonferme.
Yes.
Kenny Goodalstein.
Here.
Lorraine Crocco.
Here.
John Bryson.
Here.
Dennis Winkler.
Dennis, are you here?
He's here.
He's here.
Get her on anything.
All ready?
Does anyone have comments?
Being even being recorded as well as taped for YouTube, is there anybody that has anything they'd like to speak up? I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Bob, Bob Convo.
Okay.
I have the same issue with the supervisors meeting. I think they're using like about eight-point font for the minutes, and for older eyes, this is kinda hard to know. I appreciate it if you can change the font size.
Dennis, hold on.
I would appreciate it if we increased the font size to like ten or twelve, to make it more readable. Anybody have a problem with it?
Normally, what's usually supposed to be used is a font of twelve for reading.
Yeah, I can see that. But I mean...
I guess it's just more for the conveniences of keeping it on one page. It's not really as, maybe smaller than you think it is, but we'll do what we can.
Anybody else? Are you on?
I brought this up at the supervisors meeting, and unfortunately, it didn't get carried over to their, uh, their agenda for the following meeting. We had a power outage down here, which went on for multiple hours.
Twenty-two hours, too.
Yeah. And we have, uh, we have power right up here to the county line. And I advocated it to supervisors, that they write a letter to First Energy suggesting that perhaps they could backfeed the transformer down here from the utility up in Houston Township. Now, this was brought up probably thirty years ago. And the big hang-up where it was, they had West Penn, Mount, and Pendle Lake, which were two distinct entities. Now, with the merging of the power companies, they're all First Energy company. So that obstacle may be gone now. But I'd like this board to maybe get ahold of the supervisors and encourage them, as well as you collectively, to write a letter to First Energy, to see if they can do something about this issue.
Okay.
Well, Bob, you probably researched this, right? A little long time ago. How far would that power extend, clear into the valley and down to the sewage plants and the water?
Well, I imagine you'd probably take it over to the sub over here.
Yeah.
And then, from there, it would come out of there. Now, back in, I think it was ninety-two or ninety-three, West Penn looked into it, but they were gonna bring it over from Wedstone, that's over near Brockport. And it took thirteen miles of right-of-way across Booms Mountain, did it down here, which at that time, I think they said was a hundred thousand dollars a mile. And they butched, butched at that and wouldn't do it.
That was kind of a new right-of-way, a new line.
Yeah.
That was one... They've already got the existing lines, what you're saying.
Well, I don't know the size of the lines coming down to the county line, but I think it's three-phase even, maybe down that far, because you have the, uh, the treatment plant for the acid mine drainage.
Never run a three-phase.
That's gotta be three-phase.
It is.
Now, whether it's the low capacity is there, I'm not sure. But, I mean, coming into Houston Township, you have the, uh, the mine going up Booms Mountain, so that's gotta be a sizable feed. I'm not sure what kind of motors are running there at the acid mine drainage plant. But, you know, for maybe four more miles of wire and poles from the county line down to the sub here, then you have a second source of power for everything, and Jay and Dennis had...
I think it's worth a look.
Well, I knew too, that it wasn't even included on the agenda for the supervisors. And Joe's peer supervisor, Joe, maybe you could grab hold of this.
Here's what I wanna bring up in front first. West Penn and Pendle Lake rub heads quite a bit.
Same company now.
Huh?
That's all First Energy. Same, same company now.
Well, it used to be Pendle Lake.
Yeah. They're all First Energy. They're all in the First Energy program.
And now it might be peaceful then.
Well...
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's what I'm saying, somebody should look into it. And I think, rather than just the common citizen writing a letter, I think it should come from the board of supervisors. I think you could get an endorsement from the sewer authority here, and I think you probably get an endorsement from the water authority.
That's real, yeah.
You guys got all kinds of, well, not all kinds, but you got these satellite pumping stations, you have, what, one?
Yeah, power goes down, a lot of things go down around here, causing major issues.
Then you have residents, all these residents, and a lot of residents have grinder pumps, so if the power goes out, unless they have a backup generator, they can't flush or commode. So there's a lot of advantages to having a second feed, and even, uh, what happened, the plant not dispassed outage, but if we had an outage about a year ago, what they did, they backfed one of the phases. In other words, that's why the power came back on so long, so quickly. But they have to disconnect all the three-phase loads. So you can backfeed a phase, and where the single-phase load still have power. So, well, I make a motion that we instruct our secretary to write a letter to the township supervisors requesting that they investigate this issue. Sounds reasonable to me.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I could talk to Bob engine brakes too, but I don't think that's directly related to you guys. No. State police, the local state police gave their opinion.
And it was what, I didn't hear it?
Their opinion was, you can enforce it.
Oh, okay.
They said if you had signs down here, and it was public straits, you had an ordinance.
Are you talking about gate breaks?
Yeah. Yeah. And you could enforce it, but this is more direct to the sewage, to the backup pump.
Just so I know exactly what...
Disharm it, Bob. I'm, I'm beginning to think I'm getting really old, because I was agreeing with you on two issues. And I agree with what you're saying, by the engine breaks especially.
Yeah, there's...
Are you waking me up in the middle of the night coming down Lightning Bridge Hill?
Well, it's all through the valley, it's through forests, it's past my house, it's Burnville Hill.
So my question though is, that I'm writing a letter to the township to look into, give me just a very short version of what I'm writing. I'm writing a letter to the township to look into...
Backfeeding, is that correct, Bob?
The feasibility, the feasibility of all of the power source for Jay Township to be supplied by the Pendle Lake feed in Houston Township, both First Energy companies.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because, I mean, you know, before they got power on down here, they had ten of those bucket trucks sitting over there at all limits. And I bet those things are about five hundred dollars an hour.
There was a ton of them over there.
And they were all rentals?
Yeah, they're all rentals.
Out of town.
Yeah. They didn't have any more?
I bet that was between five and ten thousand dollars an hour sitting there while everybody went to breakfast.
Truth be told, they knew where that power break was in the middle of the night, and they waited for daylight to fix it. Now, I don't know where the terrain was, was it that bad or not, but that's what my understanding of what happened. But that's the new year to do. So I think Paul's gonna do it.
Okay. Bob, you're done? That's it, or something else?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm done, I can't read this.[1388.33][1388.33](laughter)
Do you want me to go in and make a very...
Not bad.
Christine?
I wanna thank you for putting the notice in the courier express about the natives tonight. I've been after both authorities and the supervisors to do that for ages. I get the courier, I don't get the daily press, and I'm not going up to the store every day to pick up a daily press. When I did get the daily press, I got it about three days late. So that's why I get the courier, but I appreciate you're putting it in both newspapers.
You're welcome.
I hope some of the other people appreciate that. I brought this up before. You have Dennis voting by phone.
Yes.
You do not have that in your bylaws, and I brought this up before, that you need to get your bylaws up to date.
Oh honey, there's so much needs to be added to that bylaws.
No, well, this is...
Well, that's a really important one.
I have it circled right here, and I'll spread it around for everyone to look at, is that when I went onto the Office of Open Records, the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act Open Meetings Law, it says on there, "Can agency members participate in a meeting via telephone or video conference?" Yes. Agency members may participate in meetings by telephone or video conference. In addition, members participating in this manner count for purposes of determining whether a quorum is present. So when I read that, that's what I went with, and we did not update the bylaws, because it was already a law made by Pennsylvania over us.
But it's best to factually have it in your bylaws.
But bylaws typically supersede what they do. It's like in your bylaws, you have to be a water customer to sit on this board. In the Commonwealth by, or rules and regulations, you don't have to be a water customer, you have to be a resident of the township. So in that case, the water authority bylaws superseded what the Office of Open Records has in the, uh, the new rules and regulations. So I think there is standing for Christine's request.
Okay. Well, I'm just going by what I read and what I...
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I tried to look into it, so that was mine.
Well, to comment on that, if we do decide, we put it in the bylaws, and I mean, apparently we've done it for three or four meetings, I would suggest that we get a better way of amplifying the laws.
Well, I, I think this raises another question.
It's gonna...
Can I participate in the meeting remotely then? Because you're making special accommodations for a board member. I think this opens a whole ball of cracks. If you've been allowed joint participation, then why can't Christine sit at home, take her mask off, and participate in the meeting?
My personal opinion was, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think you should have that kind of participation.
Well, that's what was done when the...
I know, it's as done, I understand. Price is love. Yeah.
Well, that's something for the board to discuss.
We'll have to discuss it.
Are you going to explain to us your correspondence, because if you are, then I won't ask about it now?
Yeah, I can explain the correspondence.
Well, wait till we get there then.
Okay.
My last question is, I have a question for each board member, starting with Penny. What's your opinion on township supervisors getting in from out to take over the sewage and water and doing away with the authority? Uh, just a brief, brief statement.
I don't like the way they did it, and I don't think they, for the best interest of the people, only got one price. But it's, I think it's more of helping out the water authorities, my opinion, that's just my opinion.
Well, you, you weren't at the meetings, I tried very, very hard to get them to have a public meeting over at the school, but they, they felt it wasn't necessary, but I thank you for your opinion. Dennis?
Dennis, did you hear Christine's question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's, where's your... I hear a lot of background. First of all, we talked about dissolving the, uh, the source company, the source authority.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, it may be a good idea if it's done properly, but I think the supervisors should at least get competitive offers. I don't know if they can legally sign a contract, a better authority, that the amount of almost six hundred thousand dollars, and not have competitive bids for other companies that also provide the services. We don't know if we're getting the best deal or not. And I'm not sure if it's illegal for the township supervisors to do this based on the government regulations on requirements for bids or contracts, but they could be personally, personally doubtful if it's illegal. Do they understand that? That's the question on my mind. Now, a management company could be good for the, for the people, but we wanna do it at the right price with the right company. We should have more than one choice. That's all I have about that.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Lori?
Um, I want safe drinking water. I don't want letting my drinking water, I want professionals handling it, and I'm tired of buying bottled water. I will not drink the water in this town. And if we can only get safe drinking water, and assuming it has to go along with it, then I'm bored. My main concern is the drinking water.
Good, thank you. John?
I haven't, uh, I haven't looked into that much, I've seen some of the proposals. I haven't, I haven't looked into that much. I've seen some of the proposals. My thought would be, I don't imagine there's very many companies that do that kind of management services.
There's a lot. There is?
No, I don't know. But from what I saw of the proposal, it seems equitable. And what we have, it's unfortunate that the two of us would have to be drawn into this because I think it runs pretty fair. The Water Authority is the shambles. I mean, it really is the shambles. Was turned into a shambles. It wasn't and it does now. So I, I don't, I don't have a real position on whether I'm for it or against it till I do some more investigation.
Okay, thank you. Alrena?
I'm kind of for it, and the main reason is, as I sit here today, being nominated as chairman, I don't know any of the rules and regulations to run a board meeting. I know nothing about sewage. I just fought for what I feel is appropriate for the employees and not taking into consideration my feelings, my wants and needs for being on the board. I feel that having a larger agency come in and maintain the space, from what I'm understanding, is mainly the operating, operating that they're going to be doing. If these people can get better wages, better supervision, better education, and have some background and some backbone to keep them above board instead of constantly flipping people that run this. I don't know, how many people did you guys say we had? At least ten or twelve? Sewage personnel coming through here? Dennis said he wanted to keep someone here for a long time, and it's really hard to do that with sixteen dollars an hour. And Cory needs to be trained, Paul is dragging her feet. Nothing's being pushed forward as much as it should be and as fast as it should be. And they've been without PPE for years, and it probably would still be that way if I wasn't on this board. If Ocean would have came in and did one inspection, this board would be shot right now, pardon my French.
There was a question, I don't know, Joe, maybe I got it wrong. I thought they said the wages would be as the wages are now, that the employees have now.
They did, yeah. I was spoken that way.
Okay.
I think what, what happened there, they said the wages would initially be what they're being paid now. After a term of so many months, which I don't recall, each employee would be evaluated and raises, or not would be given. That's my addition.
I appreciate all your comments. And some of you have some very good questions. But what is very disappointing to me, I don't remember, John, you may have been at some supervisor meetings, I don't remember. But I'm very disappointed that I have not seen any of you other members.
Never been to one.
At the supervisor meetings. I hope Dennis can hear me, because he had some good questions too. You shouldn't be at the supervisors' meetings when they're talking about this and asking them these questions. So unless you start asking some questions, this is going forward very, very quickly. And I wanted your opinions, I just want you to know, I haven't formed an opinion yet, whether it would be good or bad. Because I feel the supervisors are not doing a good job of informing the public about this.
Yeah.
So I don't have a decision yet, but it looks like it doesn't matter. But you should still be going to supervisor meetings. And that contract is supposed to be approved at the end of this month. And there's not another supervisor meeting scheduled. But I haven't seen any special meeting.
I disagree with that because we're moving forward too fast. There's a lot of variables you want to look at. The public has not been informed at all. There should be posters in the post offices, wherever, stores. A lot of people don't know what's going on. They want to know.
When they came in tour, we knew nothing. At least, I mean, was our first meeting morning? That they were coming in to tour, we did nothing about it. Besides the fact they were coming in, no one notified us.
Absolutely right.
We need to slow down and think about it before we jump right in headfirst.
Well, thank you.
Well, I mean, you know, this board, you're going to either say yes or no on this. And I think it's incumbent on the board to try and get a public meeting. And, you know, primary meeting, just don't go in that cold. Ask the public to submit some reasonable questions. Let the boards, all the boards, because you've got the water, the sewer, and the board supervisors. Let them all digest the questions and come up with the answers. I don't think it's the right way to go to throw the sewer under the bus, so to speak, so you can get the water. If the problem is the water, then maybe that's all you need the operator for. And I know there's people that'd be happy to come up here and run the water system. But, I mean, just to sacrifice the sewer system because you see a problem with the water, that's, that's inappropriate. That is very inappropriate.
What, what problems do you see of not combining both, of doing both? What do you see?
What problems do I object? You have people on the sewer, you've put a lot of time in there. I mean, and the sewers running, what they had a violation probably, I'm going to guess, twelve years ago.
I agree with that part.
And since then, there hasn't been any issues. Yeah, you've had breakdowns, and bad days where you got to show cause why something wasn't recorded right or something. But overall, the sewer's been very effectively operated.
I agree with that. But the reason, you mentioned people, there are the board workers or on the sewer authorities that work there now, are not the authority, but the actual members that work there. They're going to lose their jobs, is my understanding.
Well, they may have. They may, John. That is very evasive, the answer to gentleman's question.
Yes.
Very evasive. And for that matter, they're advertising coast to coast for people who work for them.
And my understanding is that this company that puts in trains, they make opportunities for the people that work for them to move to different areas if they want, make more money.
So they may be moving there, they may be leasing.
But then even on the community. That person there would go, that's his choice. You can't.
They could quit today.
And they would bring someone else, even qualified, in. That's my understanding. I'm just, is it right? Wrong? In between? I don't know. Not yet. I mean, what's Cory looking for? Does he want a career here in the?
I don't look for a career. That's what I'm looking for.
He's looking for a career.
I want to say hello to that. Just sort of stay here.
Well, I think there's plenty of places here in Pennsylvania I think that that company manages.
It manages eight places.
I don't know, plenty's a way to work.
Well, some are down in southeastern Pennsylvania. I live in Drunkstown and Evansburg.
That's correct.
Number one here.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. Keith?
Anyway, I mean, I sat here at the supervisor's meeting, that guy was here, John, you sat here and listened to him. His statement was that they hire operators, they're always looking for operators because they can't find operators. So when they have somebody that's down, down in Horse Ham or down in Tumalel here or whatever, his statement was that he can pull this operator and take him down there. That's what his statement was.
That's true.
That's true.
That doesn't mean he's not going to replace him.
If they don't have them, how are you going to replace what you don't have?
So what I'm saying, there's people in this country now that don't want to work. It's the highest number of workers ever.
You're not listening to what I'm saying.
Yes, I am listening. You're making no sense.
We may not make no sense.
Cory sat right here and listened to the same thing. If they take him to Horse Ham to run their plant, then he should turn around and drive back home here to run this plant, because they don't have any people to run. That's what he said right there.
Is that your take on it?
Yeah.
What's your take? I mean, so my understanding is, sewer and the water is going to be combined all at once, and it's going to be through the township supervisors and safety water guys, if something goes down, sewer guys go over there, help them, they help us. That's, that's what I got out of it.
Yeah, but Cory can't move too quickly. There's a lot of things we need to ask out, but people and citizens in the community have no idea what's going on. And they know the rates are going to be increased.
I have a question for.
Because big companies don't operate at loss, it's profit.
I have a question for the general lawyers. What, I mean, what is your objection to doing it? I'm not saying I'm for it or not, but I'd like to know what your objection is.
I'm the one. I'm the one.
All right.
I was here when the people come through.
What people?
And I told them that Infomart.
Okay.
They come to the plant. There was not, not, no one motion said, one not statement said about the supervisors taking it over. I explained this at the township meeting. When they were here, they talked about making one board out of two, and like he said, to use both parties, both operators for both identities. All of a sudden they come to the meeting, it's gone.
Well, Frankie, if you dissolve the board, if you dissolve the Water Authority and you dissolve the sewer board, they're dissolved.
They're never talking about dissolved. They talked about joining both parties, John.
No, I don't believe they did.
I guess they did, most certainly.
And both of them were supposed to take it over and make one board out of two, and then both, all the operators could work together and keep things operating. So where they come up with this, another thing, they're going to spend all the money to buy the place out. They got to pay all the bills. So you have nothing left to handle. And why do you have to sign up for five years? Why don't you sign up for two years? This is just a simple question to ask. Why don't we sign up for two years? If we don't like these guys, we could throw them out. Otherwise, you're going to spend six hundred fifty-five thousand, and you better read the fine line. Because they can add to that anytime they want to. They can add to that price, and they can back to their supervisor and say, we did another fifty thousand this year. You understand what I mean? And they have to get it through because that's where they're at.
Is that you're reading the proposal? Have you seen the proposal?
Yes, I have. That's what it says.
That's exactly what it says.
Take it back anytime and put it in. As a matter of fact, I asked a question. The gentleman sat next to me back here. I said, before, you know, in here, you're spending thirty thousand dollars for maintenance. And Keith was sitting on this side. I say, Keith, how much did you spend in maintenance last year? He said, in the sewer, we spent thirty thousand dollars. So I reflected to this gentleman, thirty thousand dollars was spent by the sewer. Now you're going to be taking money from the fund you're giving to the supervisors. Because they can draw unlimited funds from the supervisors, from what I understand. If you read that proposal, that's what it says in it.
That's all the board. Well, I'm going to, I'll get a good read on it after this meeting.
I'll ask the question about, why couldn't they have a contract for maybe three years? And try it out.
Try it out.
And Infomart said, this is a standard contract. Well, all contracts are negotiable.
Depends on who's writing the contract. Not all contracts are negotiable.
Well, let's say most are.
It's some, if you're shopping around.
If you don't even have, if you don't even ask, you just accept five years. Why not even ask?
It's a good question.
Well, John, let me add to this. At the supervisor's meeting, you were here.
I was here.
Okay. The statement was made by the supervisors that we pay six hundred fifteen thousand dollars a year now for both plants.
Correct.
And this company's been commanding to it for six hundred fifty-five, two hundred and forty dollars. So that's forty thousand dollars more money right off the top. And then the next statement that was made by the supervisor said, we're going to have an excess of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in operating costs every year. Now you know that's not true. If you have one breakdown, if you lose one of your main pumps, let's just say the well pump goes down up there for the water, since we're, that's twenty seven thou, twenty thousand dollars came here five years ago.
I'm aware of the cost.
I know you are, but I'm saying to you, that money's going to come out of the taxpayers' money, you know, run it, coulda, woulda, hoota.
You know, it could happen, I agree. But that doesn't mean it's going to happen.
The Water Authority has a good operator.
This is a story.
And it is getting the place straightened out.
Yeah, he's doing real, really good.
He's a good operator. He's doing, getting all his reports in. I mean, not that they don't have trouble, but the reports are getting in. And I can prove that.
Okay, we're about to have a lot.
Okay, let's go. I'm sorry, I asked a lot of questions, but I don't know. I'm sorry, I had a lot of good interviews.
Competitive bidding, bidding, we're not just one.
Did you say, what did you say?
Yeah, but they had that.
Joe?
Joe, you want to chat?
I just wanted to add that, pretty much what I said before, it should be posted, like the citizens of the community know what's going on. They know the rates are going to increase. It, don't dive in headfirst, slow down, delay. I'm going to delay or say no or whatever on my part. You just don't jump in headfirst. We can do more competitive bidding with other management firms. There's a lot to look at. You don't do this in two weeks. This is, has to be thought out.
Well, we've just talked about maintenance. And in their, in their proposal, this is Infomart's proposal, Infomart will provide maintenance of the facilities. We propose a thirty thousand budget out of pocket for maintenance costs for both plants now. That would include consumables parts, specialized subcontractors. The maintenance budget excludes labor provided by staff assigned to the township and covered in the base fee. Infomart personnel not assigned to the township are used to perform specialized maintenance. They will be billed at an agreed hourly rate. So any, anything that needs done, that, I'm using Cory, if Cory can't do or Jim can't do, they're going to hire somebody to come in and do it, no matter what the cost is.
And the supervisor should have a say in that. It shouldn't be the sole expression, because who knows better what's resources are available here in the community, here in the machine stocks, you know. Well, you've all made some pretty legitimate points. I think we have to move them into the order.
All right. We'll be back to physical comment.
Well, I just have a question. What does the board consider for the next steps? Are we wanting to, would you advocate adding a community meeting? Would you advocate just let the supervisors go and you vote for it?
There was discussion that the lawyer was supposed to be talked to, who's given questions, that Lily gave to Ms. Lisa. And we were supposed to find out if we were going to have a meeting on the twenty ninth, talk to the lawyer. There's no way we can have an open session when we don't know the answers. So people are going to be posing our.
Time confidential.
Yeah, this needs to be halted because we're going too fast.
So, I mean, for us to say we want to have an open meeting, which is what was supposed to eventually happen, but apparently fell by the wayside. Dinner twenty ninth, we were supposed to hear from the lawyer, we were supposed to have a meeting with him, talk to him, then have our meeting here with these questions that we posed to him and yada, yada, yada. Right now, half the people don't know what's going on, including myself. And some of the statements that are being made sound good, but there's also some that don't sound so great. As far as I'm concerned, some of the crap these two have been doing should be bitted out. They should not be working on a building. They should not be doing electrical stuff. It should not take five months to make up their mind whether we're going to move forward on a project that needs to be done. By the time we get to do it, it's failed and fell through the loop.
Are you referring to the current employees?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so we can't have an open board meeting with this whole community if we don't know what we're talking about. We're basically going to look like completely total idiots.
Then we can't rely on the reps from Infomart.
Right, so.
They've already done a couple.
So it's been, honestly, when I started this board, I honestly thought the township was our boss. Exactly. Found out two, three meetings later. And then I read the minutes for a whole year, this whole book is for a whole year, highlighted everything, question mark, flagged, when the same issue is on every single meeting and not resolved. Or table the one minute, brought up the next minute. Table the one minute, brought up the next minute. You can't get anywhere.
I don't disagree.
I mean, honestly, this is the only reason why I think this would be a good thing. We have one boss. Instead of five on this board, five on that board.
But I think the chairman's got a drawing these things to a conclusion.
Yeah, I mean, I understand it.
The double boss.
I'm going to be doing the research. It's like I told Christine, I did research on everything before I opened my mouth at these meetings, before I push for what I believe in. Unfortunately, I have not gone to any township meetings. When the last township meeting was, I knew nothing about it because I missed one of our meetings totally due to missing.
What were your credentials that they appointed you?
They appointed me? I'm a spouse. I'm a military spouse. I volunteered in the United States Army for my husband. I was an infantry leader. Exactly, that's my point.
I tried to get on this board. I have a professional engineering license.
And that's why I stayed it on baseball.
Sewer's license, a test for that.
And that's what I'm saying. If they want us on the board, they need to have.
It became political and I couldn't get on.
That's just it. That's what my point is. And that's what my point is on Facebook. What I said is, most of the people that are appointed to these boards do not have the background to stand up for... Exactly.
Because it's politics. I was told I didn't get appointed because a board member said I quit.
Didn't I say quit? You're with Christine?
That's not the way it works.
Two things. I asked, at the last supervisor meeting, January 3rd, I said, when is this attorney going to contact the sewage and water?
We have...
They are not.
We have attorney comment, we just have to finish with everything else so we can get to it.
No, I'm talking about Infomart.
No, we got the Infomart.
I asked when the attorney was going to be talking to each of the authorities. And I was told, the attorney is not. The attorney will be sending them letters. The water authority has not gotten a letter. Have you gotten a letter?
Yes.
That's...
Again.
No.
They are going to sign this contract at the end of the month. Because it's only good until the end of the month unless they get an extension.
Well, I guess, the city board, we can sit here all night.
Yeah, we may, we need a...
Just one last comment.
Okay.
These board appointments, if I said it once, I sent it a dozen times to the supervisors. You should be putting these vacancies in both, both newspapers. So everybody knows about it and they can have a chance to apply. Well, you know what, and I'm not afraid to say it tonight. They don't put them in because they want to put their own people on the board. Let's call it and go.
Okay.
All right, nobody?
Let's, we done the comments?
Comments are done?
Jim?
No.
After you back up.
Okay, so, everybody had their piece, we talked about all this. You see what more information we can find out? Now, correspondence, please. Now, we got, oh, I'm so sorry, I totally debunked. We got approval of last month's meetings. I was not... For both of Dennis.
Everybody's got a copy of the minutes, so...
You got a good poll?
I don't know how you're going to approve your minutes. It's going to, you know... Marley's not on the board anymore. Dennis was not there and you weren't here, so that leaves two members.
Good point.
Here's what it is.
So we can hold off to approve them at the next meeting if we have, if we have everybody... Rita, I guess she wouldn't be here, Dennis still isn't going to. Well, can Dennis? No, Dennis was...
Well, they got to stipulate, they didn't attend this meeting?
Yeah, I didn't attend the meeting until we forgot about it.
Just, uh, you know, for me, it's based on what they've been, they've been for, if they actually do it.
So we can approve them based on that? Is that...
No, no cap in the numbers.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Hi.
So with the stipulation of...
Okay, John.
We have to...
John?
No, Dennis.
You can't vote.
Dennis, do you want to second Dennis?
Again, I vote. More important is deliberations. But you can vote if you stipulate that. Which is based on hearsay. I stipulate, I'm basing all of my information from past minutes on hearsay and I vote I.
I vote I.
I vote I.
No. And Dennis as well?
Dennis, you approved the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, I did.
Dennis, you approved the minutes of the last meeting?
Yep, okay, moving on to that. Treasurer's report. Okay, the balance in the general fund checking account as of November 30th, 2021 was $14,669.76. The account balance in the checking as of December 31st, 2021 was $27,555.56. In the First Commonwealth Bank, we have a capital improvement account as of November the 30th, 2021. The account balance was $133,209.3. And on December 31st, 2021, our First Commonwealth Bank capital improvement account balance
I make the motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I second it.
All in favor?
Yes, I do.
We have to do the approval of the bills?
I think you have a typo in number nine, don't you?
Maybe. Anything's possible at this point, Christine.
$381.12.
$2021.
That was for the year 2021.
Should have called it the past.
Yeah, it should have been.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jamie, this was paying her from the beginning of 2021, through the end of 2021, for assistance in preparing the W2s and quarterlies that I'm not abreast of doing.
So then what's number 32?
Well, then that was another thing where they changed how they were doing it. That, the first part was, Jamie was, um, where it says the 2021 hours was actually more the beginning of the year, halfway through the year, then the J Township supervisors said that they would, that we would reimburse them for her wages, when she would help me. So it's 500 or whatever the two of them together are for the year.
I think Dennis is a little poor.
I'm not poor, it's such a motherfucker, I'm rich.
All right.
Anyway, I don't see anything with the bills to be paid that's unusual.
Is that a motion or a motion?
I'd make a motion to...
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lisa, do you have the correspondence?
I do. I have, um, there were, because there was a little bit of, I talked to almost every board member at a different time. Um, I was asked by the board to contact our attorney and ask, I asked two questions. Um, I informed the attorney that as of December 16th, 2021, the supervisors made a resolution to signify its intention to dissolve the water and sewer boards. They let the public know that they have an official proposal from Infomart. So I told him that and then I asked the question, can the supervisors dissolve the authorities without the authority's permission? And the attorney replied this, I was able to research everything and I've come to the same conclusion that you did, that the supervisors would have the authority and they are granted that authority by statute. There are other ancillary issues, like that they would still have to have a sewage enforcement officers and deputies, and this new company they are hiring may fill that role. Let me know how you want to proceed and whether the board members would want to meet with me or not. So I received that on January the 7th. This was a Friday that I don't work.
So what you're saying is the supervisors could dissolve this board whether we like it or not? You're wrong, Gus. I read the statute myself.
I was told, don't be difficult, but I won't turn.
Well, that's what attorneys do after.
What boards have to go wrong?
I know, I know.
Well, I did my due diligence by asking him those were the two, oh, so the only other second question that I asked was, would he be willing to meet with the board if they decided? And that was his response. And the second part was, let them know, let him know when he'd like to meet with them.
I'm not sure he keeps that writer.
I got it.
Does anyone here want to meet with the board or meet with the attorney? Do you see any reasons to? I mean, you got his opinion right there.
Not to answer any questions, no. I mean, honestly, I did have questions and, yeah.
Pardon me?
I said, at this time, I have no other questions, but if I dig up some, I will probably reach out and let Lisa know.
Pete, Mr. DuBois is still retained by the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you want to know the procedure? I mean, what comes next? What, what would the authority do?
Because they said right now, they want us to keep running our boards until this thing gets taken over. So honestly, nothing has come directly to us. I mean, we haven't gotten letters from the township.
I mean, I have a pile of mail in there that said a bag that I picked up tonight on my way home and then back through.
So we'll say, as of now, we haven't gotten any type of correspondence stating what the procedure is and how they want us to keep... All I, I see Jeremy at the bar, he's like, yeah, keep running meetings. That's all I know. As far as what's, what's going on. And I missed the last meeting, I didn't even see it on Facebook for the township meeting until three hours after the fact. So we'll have to go through the mail and see if we got anything and then figure out what we want to do.
Well, just for your information, the supervisors' reorganization meeting, it's always the first Monday of the new year.
Hold on, Dennis, hold on, hold on.
We have no need for the attorney. We wanted to have an opinion from the attorney, which, which he has said.
Yeah.
Township has a legal right to do. That's all we need from the attorney. We don't, we don't need them anymore.
Okay. Christine, what were you saying? I'm sorry.
I was just saying, for your information, the supervisor's reorganizational meeting is always the first Monday of the new year.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we're done with Jeff? No, no more questions about the lawyer, the letter, correspondence, anything? All right, so 31 phone calls for delinquencies. Did we get any monies?
We did, yeah. I mean, we finished off the year strong with the, I mean, I, you know, have the number written down here for the, finalized the number for the budget. And although the, you know, the budget part was approved, the actual numbers, but we were able to bring in roughly $52,000 more this year than we were last year. So some of those were in arrears, some of those were just the usage that we had in the past because of, uh, you know, issues with getting the meter reads, whether or not we were going to pay for the meter reads. You know, ultimately, no matter the $500 that we pay for them, it's worth it for the sewer authority to pay for them. It comes down to that. So I've been making phone calls this month here at the end of, towards, probably next week, delinquency letters will start going out, making people aware that they have until probably the end of the month. And then we'll pursue shut offs.
Now, when, when this all happened, you're still going to be here, Jamie's still going to be here, correct? As far as...
Well, I'm assuming, I don't know. I don't know where I'm going to be. I mean, nobody's told me anything.
I was wondering about that.
I mean, as of right now, you got you four sitting there or five on the phone?
Lisa, you can't assume anything at this point.
I, well, I, I'm just saying...
Based on what I see and how you operate and what you do, I think it'd be a, a nice advantage to have you involved.
Yeah, both of you. Since you're on the ground running already.
But I mean, the five of you are my bosses as of right now. So no one has informed me of anything any different. So until I hear differently from someone, whoever that is, I'm here.
Okay, Cory? Do you want to do the maintenance report? Do you want to, Jim? I don't know if you can talk well.
Maintenance report, uh, basically, everything's daily, weekly, what we do at the plant there. Use the pressure washers, pressure wash lots everywhere, cleaning the clear well, uh, press room, and other areas of the plant. Uh, we changed the oil in the force pumps. We had to replace a battery in the Ross Farm generator down there. And that's about it right now. And we also received the ballots for the UV lights downstairs. So we're going to hook that all up and get that going again. That's it.
All right. And Hollins' report? How is the training coming along? Is it getting better? Are you able to...
Training, she's coming up, uh, once a month. Basically, I just put all the data in the computer and if anything's wrong, she just corrects me. And that's about it. That's it. She doesn't show me anything else.
Why not?
Well, we had the list from last meeting of what she had been teaching him and what she, her plans were to continue on each. So if we want to, I can readdress her again and ask her to elaborate where more plan, what her plan is for the beginning part of the year, so that she can give you another written update. I mean, other than to just, you know, everybody trying to go off of memory of what she said probably isn't exactly, I mean, since, you know, half of us aren't, remember to come to meetings.
Lisa, I think that you ought to ask, Holly, if she can get a, a written plan for Cory of...
Yeah, some shot.
Pardon me?
Yeah, something like that would be very helpful.
Does that know what she did with last month?
Read chapter 20, or do this, or let's go do this today. Just a schedule of what he's, what he's got to do and what he's got to do.
Yeah, and that may not have been included in the meeting minutes that I had given you when I gave you, I gave you the year's worth of meeting minutes.
Yep.
Um, that actual document might not have been included in there, but I do have one in here. I can make a copy of it after the meeting, give it to everybody so they can review it again and make it fresh in your mind. And then if there's any further questions, you can call me and I can ask her to review it.
Did she prescribe any books for Cory?
No.
You know, because I think it's New Washington Sacramento, they have a pass on wastewater program. You know, it's in two parts, as I recall. It costs a fifty bucks or a hundred bucks to pay. What's next, Rita? Something like that would be great.
All right, old business, discuss Cory's status and application for certification. Kind of going over it right now. His registered exam is done, passed three exams, done. Two passed in May, one passed in August. He submitted his application for certification of operator water sewage, uh, sorry, water system with examination. Passed letters, done. Submitted application for details, experience, educational, along with fees totaling $405. And he also had to have a criminal background check. It's done. Mailed December 2nd, 2021. The check was returned from DEP, avoided. A new check was written for 2/20 and mailed out December 22nd. Why does it all say 2021?
Because that's what happened.
Oh.
Because it was in December. It's 2022 now.
Oh, Jesus Christ, I'm so lost. Um, we had overpaid the bill. DEP board has reviewed all information and must wait for DE board approval, at which time the appropriate operator certification will be issued. Everything is pending on your training, correct?
Everything's pending on the DEP, uh, and that's board meeting.
Their board meeting. Everything is submitted. All he needs is that meeting and that meeting won't take place until February.
And then I should be receiving my actual certification afterward, after that.
Then we're in March, you should, okay. All right, now we're going to have an executive session to discuss the pay raises. Is that correct? We doing this right?
Because I'll make a motion, we have an executive session.
Someone seconding that?
I am.
Aye.
I want to make one question under whole business.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I don't want to violate the agenda. I want to make sure next month's agenda reflects a discussion for Friday's gas and oil. So on the agenda, we're going to discuss it. We give you a brief heads up, what I might discuss, but I don't want to violate the agenda. So Fridays need to go on next month.
Okay.
All right?
Guys, ready? Back in session? All right. We had our executive session to discuss raises, and this is what we're going to. Ms. Lisa is going to be at 6:50, current wage including the cost of living, she's going to be at 16:50. I know, I know, I missed that 6:50. Corey is going to be at 18:50.
I'm waiting on that. Do you need motions for this?
We're still working on that, see if she...
Yeah, we're going to do them all at once instead of one at a time.
I'll do it all at once.
Corey is going to be at 18:50 with the cost of living included. And Jim's going to be at 16:50 with the cost of living included.
I make a motion.
Penny, Penny made the motion?
Yeah.
Lori seconded it. Dennis seconded it too. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, new business. Changes were made in the first Commonwealth accounts concerning signature cards. Late, last updated signature card was February 2021. Current signers are as follows. Pete Lilly, Penny, and Rich, whoa, Rich Bowers still on?
Yeah, and so it's Lisa, so it needs to be...
Okay, all these.
Yeah, I just need a ma, I just need a motion made to be able to go to the bank to get it changed, and then have the appropriate paper work for you at the next meeting, we can get it signed.
Make a motion, we definitely expect...
I seconded it.
Who's going to be the new signer, is that?
I'm on it. I'm the top dog, I guess I gotta be one of the signers.
Just you and them.
All of us are going to be on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody. Including Dennis.
No, usually, last time we have, we did not put Dennis on there because he wasn't around to be able to... He was okay with that.
Everybody but Dennis.
Yes.
What does that require? One signature or two?
It's a two-signature.
Okay, that's, that should be.
I'm the si, I'm the second signer, usually. So, you know, we do have the option that Jamie was the backup secretary in, in event of emergency, but normally we don't make it a habit of having both secretaries signing, so.
Very good.
Corey, you going to give a quick update? The board on quotes received for the installation of the mid-pumps?
Yeah, so for the, the grant down at the forest pump station, we have all the pumps, everything ready to get all PLCs down there. So what I did, I received two quotes, one from WC Wild. That one was 19,000. We're definitely not going to go with that one. But I called Allegheny Electric down, and the second quote I got from them was, what was it? 4250. 4250.
They have it up there.
So I talked to Kurt a little bit about it also, what we're going to do. They're planning on the installation of the PLC and the motors to start. And then once we have the PLC and the motors installed, then we can install the pumps. That way we can run one side at a time, and then that way we still have our flow going to the main plant to be treated. And they're going to also have a couple more guys come down and help us install the motors.
But the installation of the motors will be additional charge, correct? That's not included in that quote?
That's all included.
That's all included?
That's included.
It says on the quote there, the installation of motors.
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean the pumps, though. When you do the installation of the pumps, you have to contact someone else to help with that.
Yeah, the pumps are going to be the next step.
The next step.
How much are the pumps cost?
The pumps, um...
It says, and I asked it for the reason that controls installation, new customer supplied pumps.
Just a roundabout figure, is what he's asking.
We already...
Pumps are already there.
Oh, okay.
So the pumps were...
That was just their quote for the installation of PLC and everything altogether.
Okay.
Yeah, the pumps were paid for by the CBDG, CBDG grant.
I don't want to not answer your question, but I believe the value of the pumps that was purchased under the grant was in excess of $40,000.
Yeah, like 42...
Yeah. Have they already been purchased and they're already on site?
No, they're, they're planned out there. They have to be taken down yet. We just have to get them loaded in trucks and somehow get them put in the truck.
That's right.
Take them down the day they start installation?
It's almost, it's almost like, almost like... Which one were you talking about?
We're going to make a motion to go with Kurt Brennan from Allegheny Electric for the 4250.
Well, normally I would suggest that disparity of that grade, there's got to be a problem. But I know Kurt Brennan.
Between 19 and 42?
And I would say he's fine.
What's his company name again?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's been around forever.
Second. So who was the first, I'm sorry?
Rita.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
The pumps were about 42,000?
It was bought with the grant. It's a little bit over 42,000, already purchased with the grant. Now, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, I'm going to ask. We discussed buying the grinder pumps two meetings ago since I missed the last one. Did we move forward on getting the grinder pump that we discussed?
Yeah, I ordered one through WC Wild.
Okay, now what about the two Lilly still has?
Those are two different things. We're talking about...
They're, they're two different pumps?
They're not. They're not grinder pumps, are they?
What does Lilly have to be determined?
Lilly has, Lilly has one grinder pump and also a Moino press pump.
Why, why does he have to?
He was going to rebuild the yard.
Two years ago.
We need to get it back and set it up to get repaired.
How long has he had it?
Two years.
Two years.
One grinder pump and one what?
One grinder pump and one press pump.
Press pump.
What, what is your plan for getting them back?
Come on, please.
Soon as he's, well, if he come back, we're going out to get it. We're just going out to say, Keith, we need to put it back in the yard.
Okay.
Did you plan on doing what, sending it somewhere else for repair?
Yeah.
He actually said once the labor is done, he was going to work on, because Corey brought it up three meetings, just three months ago.
And they've been there for what, three years?
Two years.
Three years. Two years.
Can I say something about them pumps?
Yes, sir.
When I was in there, we found out, once you rebuild them and stuff, they don't seem to last as long. And the others lasted for like 20 years or something, we haven't changed. And it was just almost, as far as price wise, to buy a new one. It wasn't lasting.
That's a good call, that.
Well, can we...
My suggestion is to get them back. Contact somebody...
To sell them?
Yeah.
To, to rebuild them, what it costs, and contact what it costs to buy a new one.
And they do what's best.
Strap the old one for scrap money.
Yeah, that's what I was going, yes.
Way to the facts. Way to the facts.
Yeah, okay. That, that's, that's awesome.
So first we can get them, and then that's what we'll do.
Rita?
Yes, sir.
I also want to bring up that there's $10,000 in that grant, somewhere in that money, that could be used towards the, the make...
The basis of the building?
No, for now, forest.
Okay.
Going for it.
It's a, it's a... Yeah, there was, because Keith did tell me him about that. He said there was $10,000 in there.
Who applied for that grant?
Keith. I, I apparently Keith did.
All right, so...
I think that...
Lisa, do you have questions?
Well, I'm shaking my head no, because I think there might be a, maybe I'm not understanding correctly, but somehow it was explained to me about the grant was that, the, um, that, that grant was a materials-only grant. So we got materials only. And when I got the bill, they said do not pay it. I forwarded it on to Tracy Gerber down at the, she's the lady that heads up the grant. So down in Ridgeway, I forwarded the bill down to her, and she said they were, they were paying it. So I didn't even, we, none of the money even touched. It just was, I got the bill and I sent it on.
The little man passing it on.
Yes.
So Tracy Gerber applied for the grant?
No. Murray, Murray applied for the grant. She's the one that handles the grant stem. The application comes in, she's the one that reviews the application and then makes the determination. I think what Jim's referring to is that Murray was saying that usually, a percentage of whatever materials you're using, a percentage of that is called your in-kind money. And that is the money that you, as the authority or whomever is getting the product, has to put in out of pocket to get it installed.
Was there any in-kind money in this as?
Well, the in-kind money comes out of our checking account.
Yeah, well, how much was it?
Well, that's going to be the installation.
Oh, the installation.
Yeah, so I think that maybe the part that, that Murray was telling Jim was that the, the $10,000, I think initially they thought it was only going to be about $10,000 for the installation of the PLC and for then having someone come in and actually physically install the pumps. And we projected that to be 10,000, but we had not had, you know, now we're only obtaining the quotes, now that we were approved the pumps and they actually paid for the pumps. So the pumps being 42,000, we assumed a quarter of that was going to, they said 10%, but I think it's 10,000. I'm sorry, not 10%, 10,000.
Okay.
Okay? So that clarifies that.
Okay, number four. Allegheny Electric to check, check totalizer for flow to plant, urgent issue. Oh, I'm so sorry, I did miss three. Cellar refrigeration called on the 1st, January 10th, to repair heater in garage and office at plant, urgent issue, no heat.
I got a question. What was wrong with it?
Uh, we recharge the, uh, trainee. That was for the office. It's one of them, trainee, for instance. We recharge that, change the filter in, and also we have one of them redners out in the garage. It went the light.
So the igniter was bad?
Igniter was bad, and that was it. What else do you want?
Everything works now. Good deal.
Now, number four. Allegheny Electric to check to, totalizer for flow to plant.
So...
I know, that's what I was just thinking, I want to...
Is that the right word, totalizer?
I don't know, that's what Corey...
Yes, it's called.
I want to...
It sounds like they made it up here, doesn't it?
It kind of does, but...
That's why I rolled off my tongue so smoothly.
You caught it too, didn't you?
So the totalizer, the totalizer is how many million gallons come in at the plant a day. And it runs off of a turbometer, which is downstairs on our inflet.
The one you showed me?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Matt came down and did a calibration reading on it, and they say if it won't go up to 100%, then there's something wrong with the, the actual ring downstairs. So, um, there's something wrong inside that, that meter system.
Probably wore out.
Yeah.
Certainly it's wore out.
So are they coming back in, or are we straight, what's, what's, what do we worry about?
We're going to have to repair, we're going to have to find out why, and then probably order, order a part for it.
Are they coming back in tomorrow to find out, or?
He came back in, tried to do that calibration, he said...
It's a no-go?
It's no-go.
So the next is purchasing and fixing and...
Yes.
Would they, they point you in any direction where it might be the problem?
He was thinking it was the totalizer upstairs, just the chart reading, but then moved over to the turbometer, and he thinks it's just the turbometer now. Because the turbometer gives a signal to the chart recorder to make the reading.
I'm surprised, if the turbometer is...
I, no, we're going to...
That's very simple.
Oh, yeah.
Is that critical to plant operation?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Has it calculated flow for DEP and...
No, it needs to get fixed.
Yeah.
So they're coming back tomorrow to...
No.
No?
They can't do that. They just can't...
We, we need to work with Mark and fix it ourselves, and then they got to come back here and recalibrate.
Oh, so you know what part it is?
Turbometer.
Yes, John, we do.
The whole meter?
We need to work out, we need to get, you know, we need to get it...
Well, you mentioned something down below. Corey, that's where the turbometer is.
Part. So do we need a motion now, connect it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or part of the meter. You fixing it or you getting a whole meter?
I think it'd be better off just getting one meter. Yeah. For downstairs, it's the incluent, it's the ring itself on the pipe.
The ring itself, that's not the whole, that's not the whole meter.
It's on the exterior of the pipe, correct?
No, it's...
From the engineering standpoint, it's not a magnetic meter. It's a magnetic meter.
Oh, math.
It's a pipe. Basically looks like a pipe, but on the outside of it is magnetic controls that can, that records the velocity through that, the velocity of the sewage. Then it calculates the flow based on the velocity and the fixed diameter. I would probably suggest contacting the manufacturer and see if they can come in and diagnose that before you buy the whole assembly. Number one, that the whole assembly is fairly pricey. Number two, I think the lead time on that's probably going to be way out there. I'm not sure what you're seeing in the, in the supply industry on, on those lead times, but I'm thinking 12, 12 weeks right off the bat on a whole meter. I think it's prudent to look at the, the, the actual assembly itself, have a manufacturer look at what's already in place, and diagnose the electronics there before you jump in to buy the whole assembly. There shouldn't be, there's nothing really on the inside of it, unless the magnetic sensors have gone bad that are encapsulated in a meter. Thank you for that info.
So I was just going to say, so do you know somebody?
Yeah, we got a whole thing, right? We can get all of it.
You don't use the manufacturer's representative to do calibration?
Right.
I would go directly to the manufacturer. You made the turbo? Yes.
Magnet.
Magnet.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe Penny can get these guys, the sales representative too, for that particular manufacturer.
I might be able to give you the name. Your message, right?
Because that's the project.
Take picture of the model number or the tag on it, send it to Penny, and she can...
You have my phone.
Get somebody to, get the proper guy to take a look at that.
Is everybody good with the meeting?
You done, swell. You done, swell.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, my God, me too. I'm also going to go for a beer, but I'm late.
One second.
Thank you, everybody.